Streaming and lobbying.
Good evening. I had a call to order the Durango City Council meeting. Could we have the roll call?
Councilor Bosmans.
Present.
Councilor Youssef.
Here.
Mayor Protam Yasi.
Here.
Councilor Woodruff.
Here.
And Mayor Buell. Absent.
Could we have the introduction of the translator?
We got the ILA first and we'll be on that in just one second.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu, Ute; Hicarria, Apache, Apache; Pueblos of New Mexico; Hopi-Sinam, Hopi; and Dene-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation.
Item number two, Mayor Protam, is the introduction of the translator.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Liz Torres y estoy aquí con mi colega Ví Torres. Y el día de hoy estamos con la Cooperativa Comunitaria del Lenguaje. Y hoy vamos a practicar Justicia Lingüística para poder tener acceso al canal de español o de inglés. Puede tener acceso por el menú de More o más. Allí puede seleccionar el idioma y es en inglés o en español. Hi, good evening. My name is Liz Torres and I am here with my colleague Ví Torres from the CLC. And thank you so much for practicing language justice so that everyone can speak and be heard in the language of their heart. In order to access the menu, you should click the More menu on the top of your screen and then access Language and Speech and you can select English or Spanish from there. And we can go ahead and get started.
Thank you. Item four is presentations, or excuse me, item three is opening remarks by mayor and council. Nope. No remarks. Presentation, the next item is Presentations and Proclamations with a presentation by La Plata Economic Development Alliance and Early Childhood Council of La Plata County.
Council, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Sarah Tober, the Executive Director of La Plata Economic Development Alliance.
The Executive Director of the Early Childhood Council of La Plata County.
And we want to start out by saying first and foremost, thank you so much for the conveyance of the Ready Grant to make this work possible that we're going to talk about tonight. This Early Child Care Strategic Investment Plan wouldn't be possible without the city of Durango as a partner. And so thank you very much and thank you for the staff's time on this. Okay, so you know about the alliance, so I'm not going to spend too much time on our mission and who we are, but the three cornerstones of who we are is the workforce housing that you all are familiar with, workforce development and in business capacity. And so that's how a lot of this childcare came up, is through our employers and through industry letting us know that they were having trouble with building business capacity, recruitment and retainment of employees because of workforce housing and childcare.
The Early Childhood Council is the system leader here in La Plata County for all things birth to six years of age. We're a quasi-government nonprofit that oversees workforce development, mental health consultation, and quality improvement for all licensed care in La Plata County.
Okay, so again, this strategic investment plan was made in partnership of, with the city of Durango and the Regional Housing Alliance, as well as the alliance and the ECC. And we spent a lot of time with the community. We interviewed over 300 residents, business owners, childcare providers. We had focus groups, we had surveys, we had one-on-one interviews. And so the data here gathered has been very comprehensive. We tied in with the Housing Needs Assessment that is being published currently through the RHA, that's La Plata County wide. It has a lot of really great data there, too. But ultimately, we also looked at some case studies from, you know, best practices around the state and around the nation. The Early Childhood, sorry, the Early Childhood Council is really well-positioned in understanding this space and helping to provide guidance. The numbers speak for themselves, as I'm sure you've seen in this, in this plan. And that is that this is a $34 million impact to our entire county and lost wages. We had 60% of employers telling us that they had lost employees due to childcare issues, to access to quality childcare. We had 26% employers have lost five or more employees. And 54% of employers have reported ongoing hiring challenges because of this. So we've all known and felt this issue, but this helps to quantify it and helps us to understand exactly the root and the systemic issues here. So in the market analysis and the economic impact of it, you know, 34 million is a huge number. It's part of a larger, broader problem in the state of Colorado. It's a 2.2 billion problem. It's an issue across the nation as well. But as you know, here in our southwest corner, we always have, have to have unique solutions to our issues, given where we are in proximity to other areas. So there's a lot of good data here around the issue in the state of Colorado and how it impacts business and the economy. But the one I wanted to point out is on the bottom of this slide, that there has been an 11% decrease in licensed childcare slots. That's losing 147 slots over five years since 2019. And if this trend continues, the county's licensed childcare capacity will decline by approximately 23%. So that will mean that we would fall below 1,000 slots by 2030 if we do not do anything about this issue and it continues to build. That to me is the most concerning part. And I think if you look at that data in tandem with the Housing Needs Assessment, where you see where the population shifts are happening, if we lose our workforce here, you understand the broader implications, I'm sure. And to really understand what this issue looks like for your constituents and for our fellow residents. our fellow residents and businesses and employers, you should look at the needs and gaps right here in this market status. And that is especially with infants, zero to 18. We have a current licensed capacity of 80, and we have a need of 656. So we have a gap of 576. In La Plata County, we have a birth rate of 5%, which is about average, it's a little above average actually for the state of Colorado, and that comes out to about 425 births in the county. So we're, we're still having babies here. And our, and if you look at the total licensed capacity, that does not account for the fact that none of our childcare centers are operating at full capacity right now. And when we look at the systemic issue there, we see that that has to do with the fact that they're not making a living wage. If you've been following Region 9 and their Living Wage Study, which has Durango at about $24 an hour, you can see these are substantially below that wage range. So we have a completely destabilized industry with 41% turnover rate. And that is because a lot of childcare providers will go work at a fast food restaurant and make $20 an hour versus $16 an hour to do the hard work of childcare educators. We have 260 childcare educators here in La Plata County, and they, their median annual income is $40,560. So 15% of them are living below the poverty line. And if you followed anything with Alice and what the United Way has been talking about in terms of poverty levels, you know, we measure those by federal standards that have been around since the 60s, 70s. So yeah, those are probably a little outdated. So this number could be more like 30% even. So this systemic issue is deep. But it's not all bleak. We do have a bright future, the solution that we have crafted through this plan. I'll let Heather present.
Need some heels. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, really short. So what is the solution? Well, we're going bold. It is $20 million investment over the next five years. This investment is divided into two primary investment accounts. The first is a childcare investment fund of $10 million. This is a $2 million a year investment in the early childhood workforce. This fund will bring the living wage of childcare workers up to a competitive rate of a minimum of $20 an hour with a goal of reaching the living wage of 24 by the end of the first three years. The fund would be investments from our employers regionally. They're already paying for the cost of this lack of childcare and inability to retain and recruit high-quality workers. And the cost of replacing a high-skilled laborer in our area can be twice their annual income. The second area of investment is the infrastructure. We do not have enough physical space for children to be educated and thrive across this county. And so we do need to invest in those facilities. We also have a number of aging facilities that will not be eligible for continued licensing over the next five to 10 years. Many of them are located in historic buildings. And as you know, being an owner of historic buildings, they're expensive to renovate and are difficult to bring up to code. So what would the breakdown of this investment look like? In the childcare investment fund, we would be working towards stabilizing our childcare workforce through wage increases and accessibility to benefits with immediate impacts on retention and recruitment. This would require a $1.2 million a year investment in wages for our early childhood workforce. It would also require an $800,000 catalyst of new childcare providers. This could be for the creation of family childcare homes, licensed small businesses, home-based businesses, as well as the expansion of existing facilities and support for bringing existing facilities up to full capacity. It would also include the creation of a bilingual program option for families here in La Plata County, and ultimately address the infant and toddler childcare desert that is experienced by Ignacio and Bayfield. The funding sources, as you can see, are public, private, and philanthropic. And the average wage increase per childcare educator would be approximately $4,000 a year. Where would the funding come from? Well, we advocated for the lodging tax reallocation as a potential public investment in this fund. We will also be considering municipal special tax districts, mill levies, sales and property taxes, and tax-exempt revenue bonds for capital bonds. For the employer donations, we are seeking to recruit two years of investment from eight of our largest employers in the region to contribute up to $50,000 with the opportunity to receive a $25,000 state childcare contribution tax credit. And we're meeting with many philanthropic partners here locally and up in, at the state level to match investment with our local investment. Our philanthropic partners that have been investing in our childcare system for the last 28 years want to see local investment to keep bringing their dollars down to our region. So this year, we're setting up these markets. We're establishing a childcare coalition to help guide the spending. This would be a cross-sector coalition of public, private, and philanthropic partners. We will complete a geomapping project to identify potential areas that can be developed for childcare. We know that across the county, there are many restrictions, water use, zoning, land use, infrastructure, traffic, all these things that impact whether or not a childcare facility can be constructed. We also want to conduct a childcare planning audit during some interviews with employees of the city of Durango. There was some interest in looking at our local regulations through a childcare lens. And at the end of this year, we will launch these funds. The Infrastructure Fund has already identified a partner in, for Southwest Bank. They're offering to set up process for low-interest loans for infrastructure, as well as planning and gap grants through their foundation.
So at the end of the day, what kind of economic impact and expected outcomes we can have? We would be growing childcare capacity to 73% by 2029, including 15 new licensed centers or homes. We would be increasing wages for all childcare workforce to at least $20 to $24 an hour. We would be stabilizing the childcare workforce. That's a critical piece for us as we, you know, as your EDO, your Economic Development Organization, you know, we're not in a position to recruit big business right now, or much of any business really, until we get the workforce housing and childcare crisis under, under wraps. And to establish at least one bilingual Spanish option for families, we're already working on that, and establishing at least one licensed center for zero to three in both Bayfield and Ignacio. Both of those communities are talking to us about parcels of land that they have currently. And then adding at least $21 million in additional earnings annually to La Plata's economy. I'm sure you may have some questions, so we are here for it.
If I shall start, first, thank you so much for the presentation. I think this, we all knew that childcare was not adequate, but I think with this report and the study and as you presented, you know, we have a roadmap, we have a way to move forward. And I'm going to bring that a little bit in perspective. I have children. My oldest is 19, born here, and even then, we had problems finding childcare and the cost was quite high. So that's 19 years ago, so this is not a new problem, but we need to move forward on it, and I think this is a great way to get some traction. Then the, I liked your comment on the bringing up to code, because I think a big risk is that if someone sells or closes or changes hands, then they are stuck with an outdated facility that needs to be brought up to code, and then we lose a facility. So I think that is also a very important part. And then funding sources, I think is great. You mentioned the lodger's tax. I think the lodger's tax will certainly come up during the next council, I hope at least, as we part of it. Because we hear, I hear at least quite a bit from our community that we should be maybe considering reallocating some of the sources. This would be a great opportunity to do our part from that source of income and give something long-term, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would say not only for the presentation, but all of the work to be able to present tonight was done by, by you all and your respective organizations. So thank you for giving us just a, a starting point to know what the delta is. We, we don't know how to address an issue if we don't know what, what the scope of the issue is. So thank you for putting in so much work and effort in order to, to give this to us tonight, and just the community at large. I mean, the community also, you know, has an opportunity to address this and whatever mechanism we can hopefully employ, whether it's the city, the county, or other funding opportunities, I'm really excited to know where we're at and hopefully the trajectory of where we want to be. As we know, to grow our economy in Durango, we have to grow our families. We have to grow from the, from the, from the, from the middle out. And so this is a really important inflection point for not only our local economy, but our community at large. You want to see our community grow and grow healthfully, we have to start making this a reality for families to come and not only live here, but thrive here. So thank you so much for the work.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, we just thank you as well. It's really interesting to see the data that you've laid out in this report, you know, the, the number of employers that have lost employees due to childcare. I mean, just to actually see those numbers and to see the gaps for the different age groups is really, really helpful. So it's very helpful, this report that you've done and that you shared with us publicly to outline the issue and to see it more specifically. So it is very helpful. I see it as a huge priority for our community. I really thank you for partnering with the Economic Development Alliance and coming to the city and the county. And I do hope we can help as well. I think it's really important. We just had a meeting today on a lot of our grant funding programs, and so I hope that we can look at some of those sources and, and others as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think pooling our resources is really important, as we've seen so many businesses tell us, they looked at opening a childcare center themselves, or, you know, they've, in obviously the loss of employment. So, you know, if we're able to pool our resources, it's just like with housing, as we've been able to do with the RHA and with workforce housing, the more we pool those together, the more we get state funding and philanthropic funding as well.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. I think it's a great plan, especially when you're looking at long-term planning and the fact that you're pulling in community partners. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, well, the conversation won't end tonight, but we will be around to continue talking. And we are, we do have the plan on our website, as well as we are taking in comments. So we will be able to update you all probably in six months as to where we are in the implementation and what kind of feedback we're receiving.
The next item is City Manager Updates.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have a few updates for the City Council. First, if I could get Brett Hodney and Bob Lowry to come on up, I'd like to recognize and introduce. First, we'll do an introduction with Brett Hodney. Mayor and Council, this is our new Public Works Director. Very excited to have Brett on board. Brings a tremendous amount of experience in public works from West Des Moines, Iowa, as well as Buckeye, Arizona, and give him an opportunity to introduce himself.
Well, Mayor, Protem, and Council, I just want to let you know how honored and privileged I feel to be part of this organization. When I was interviewing, it was very evident to me that this had a right feel for it, the community itself, the leadership team, the staff. I've only been here a short time, but I've been nothing short of impressed of what I've seen. It was interesting, you know, this first, the second week of being introduced into the Baldridge, you know, philosophy, you know, and to have the community undertaking that just shows what kind of a community this is. So I'm really looking forward to helping the city achieve the goals it's laid out and its strategic plan, its missions, its values. And once again, I'm just honored to be here and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Brett. And then next up, Mr. Bob Lowry, just want to recognize Bob for stepping up and helping us here for the past seven months in our Public Works Department. Bob has been a, an awesome addition to our team. He's really provided a lot of experience and knowledge for us, and we really appreciate his, his ability and his tenure while he was here. Bob will also be working on a couple other projects and finishing them out, like the Stormwater Drainage Project, so he's not completely gone as of today, but he will be heading tomorrow home to Colorado Springs, but want to give Bob an opportunity to say a few comments.
Mayor, Protem, Councillors, Jose, Bob, and Aaron, ELT members. This has been one of the most enjoyable seven months of my life, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this great community. My wife was with me for about half the time, and she said, if we hadn't moved 31 times and weren't settling Colorado Springs, she would settle in Durango. That's what she thought of it. So I, I commend Jose for the great team he's put together for his leadership and, and the drive for excellence. I look forward to the outcomes in the future, and I'll be staying in touch. Thank you again very much. It's been a real joy.
Thank you, Bob. And then finally, Mayor and Council, I do want to introduce you to our interim Chief Financial Officer. Did start last week to do a little transition as Devin heads to St. Beach, Florida. So Cheryl, you could stand her if you want to come up. That's more than welcome, but that's Cheryl Turney, our interim Chief Financial Officer. We're absolutely excited to have her on board to help us out while we finish up the recruitment for our new Chief Financial Officer. Thank you, Cheryl.
The next item on the agenda is Committee, Board, and Liaison Reports.
Yeah, I could, I can jump in. I missed the last meeting, so my apologies for not giving my super rad, exciting report. Sorry you all missed it last time. You're welcome for tonight. I was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce Board Retreat on Tuesday of our last meeting, and we talked a lot of advocacy around new bills, both the State and the House, you know, new liquor license business, et cetera. We talked about the local minimum wage discussion and compiling information around local impacts. We talked about possibly leaning more into advocacy and strengthening partnerships to align business needs with schools in regards to workforce. I was also able to meet last week with Enrique from Los Copaneros regarding rental cap conversations and legislation to implement that at the state level and also the minimum wage increase. We also had a water, I'm sorry, wildfire and watershed protection fund meeting, committee meeting. Randy, Chief Black was here earlier for our study session, kind of going over some of those same, some of that same information, but we discussed the changing funding and grant landscape for fire mitigation, management, and response. Chief Black gave a really good summary of the current fire management plan and how we will go into spring, summer, and fall. So definitely something that's height of mind for all of us. Like many of my compatriots out there, we attended the Durango Rocks Award Ceremony this past, this past week, and I guess it was two weeks ago now, where we celebrated local, locals, local independent businesses and nonprofits for their contributions to the community. So that was great. And then lastly, I met with the smiling building owner, Charles Shaw, to discuss the Midtown Multimodal Project and River Trail Access.
I'll just add that we have an Eggs and Issues Candidate Community Forum tomorrow at the library from 8:30 to 10:00. And I will be speaking on the reauthorization of the 2005 half-cent sales tax. Hope to see some of you there. I know I'll see a few of you at least.
Okay, so I went to the neighborhood, walked and rolled yesterday. The weather was a little bit cold, but we did have one person come out and we discussed traffic calming on 32nd Street, so that was eventful. 32nd Street. So that was eventful. And then also today I had my office hours and we had five people come in and everybody was pretty much concerned about the election. They had questions about that. And also the food to farm issue was brought up. And so I, I think that we're going to have a study session on that in the spring. So we discussed that. And so basically that was all.
The next item is public comment on action items only. Tom, could we have the reading of the outline for that?
Public comment is encouraged on agenda items set for consideration and a vote by the council tonight. Public comments on items not set for consideration by the council come later in the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating the agenda items set for a vote you intend to speak on, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to the item you identified when you began your comments. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to the item you identified, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, US sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
The first item, person signed up to speak is Matt Erickson, speaking on item 12.2.
The Director of Marketing for Purgatory. I've arranged some comments here. Otherwise my comments might devolve into a snow report, which I am happy to provide at the end of my remarks. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to share my support for this initiative. I really value the longstanding partnership with Visit Durango. And I believe these kinds of collaborations are the foundation for sustainable and thriving tourism industry in our community. As one of the key drivers of tourism, especially during non-peak times, Purgatory is excited to work alongside the proposed Tourism Commission to showcase our incredible area in a way that's both strategic and sustainable. This city-led structure will not only strengthen our tourism efforts, but also reinforce the broader economic impact that tourism has on our community. With millions generated in tax revenue and a large percentage of our local workforce supported by the tourism industry, it's clear that investing in tourism is investing in Durango's future. I am also, I also appreciate that the strategy acknowledges the critical link between tourism and workforce housing, an essential factor in sustaining long-term growth. However, it's important that we take a responsible, destination-focused approach, one that improves accessibility beyond drive markets, which tend to bring more traffic, shorter stays and fewer long-term benefits to the community. Additionally, I believe evaluating our transportation infrastructure is a key piece of the puzzle, ensuring that we're investing in, investing in and building a system that supports both residents and visitors in an efficient and sustainable way. Looking ahead, we're excited to collaborate on initiatives like the Outdoor Media Summit, which was a huge win for Visit Durango and the entire community. These types of events showcase what makes Durango special, attract high-value visitors and help position us as a premier destination in what is a very competitive market. I look forward to continuing to work together to strengthen and grow Durango's tourism and economy in a way that benefits our business, workforce and overall community. Thank you for your time.
The next person signed up to speak is Charles Goodman.
Mayor Protem, members of the council. I am here to express my support for the establishment of the prosperity department and the tourism committee within the city of Durango. This is an opportunity to ensure sustainability and responsible tourism growth. I am a board member of Visit Durango and I, and I represent the specialty lodging sector of the community. I own the Gable House Bed and Breakfast along with my partner Tracy Trotter. With my, uh, the Tourism Commission with the proposed structure made up of industry professionals, local businesses and community members will provide a balanced approach to managed tourism. By combining tourism, housing and economic growth, the city is better able to allow its resources, to align its resources with the goals of sustainability and community engagement. The economic importance of tourism in Durango is significant. Over $40 million in tax revenue and 3,800 jobs supported by tourism. These represent both a third of the workforce and a third of the tax revenue. Investment in tourism supports financial stability of the city, its workforce and the businesses that depend on the visitor spending. The city's financial stability plays a key role in supporting the quality of life and the many amenities we enjoy in our daily life. Sustainability is critical to tourism management. It is important to address environmental stewardship and community well-being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last person signed up to speak under this section is Karen Aneci, who would like to speak on two items.
I'm sorry I didn't sign up correctly, but the laptop wasn't working out front. I'm speaking tonight first about the landmarking of the nine hour administration building. I'm going to be very brief because I've been up here before and talked about that. But I know that, I know that Savannah will probably address the history in terms of the architect and maybe the architectural features. But I want to speak about something else and that is, that is the number of people that walked those halit halls and even before they were built, the immigrant artisans, the masons, the bricklayers who built the building. And I think of those people, and I know that they, they were the sons of the, maybe the miners who homesteaded here. And then I look at it from other generations, the number of people who got their public education in that building. And if there's any building that ought to be landmarked and honored, it ought to be a public school, in my opinion. So I'm really glad that for so many reasons that the city stepped up and that they have the building and that they're going to keep it in the hands of the public. Because that's who built, maintained and walked those halit halls. So I know tonight is when you're going to be discussing that ordinance. And I, I hope that you will take, keep in mind that, that, you know, a number of, it's had a number of false starts in which we, you know, the Historic Preservation Board and others have said this should happen. But I think you really goes to Dan and to Victoria Gianola and especially just Savannah Lidle because they got it over the goal line. So I hope you take it from there. And I guess I'm, I got a minute seventeen, so I'm just going to move into the next item. And that is another item that is on the agenda and that is the ordinance that speaks to public par, or I'm sorry, privately owned parking lots. And I, I don't know the specifics of the ordinance, but I want to thank whoever put that together because I think there are a lot of people that have private parking lots in the downtown area especially that they're, they're being used, trespassed on or whatever, however you want to phrase it. And there really isn't a consequence. And so I don't know that those, those private businesses should shoulder that burden. And that's in fact what they're doing. And so I'm glad to see that somebody's stepping up and doing that because it will make it clear and it, and it, and it builds, I think, confidence in, in the city and it's, it's uh, assessment of what kind of parking is available. It's skewed when people are using private parking lots and then denying that benefit that tenants are paying for. So again, I'm not sure how this kind of came together, but I'm grateful for it. So thank you. Say my name. Karen Aneci, City of Durango.
Thank you, Karen. The other people signed up are signed up to sign, to speak later in the meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. With your permission, I'll read that.
Go ahead.
Eight point one is approval of minutes with eight point one point one being approval of minutes of the February 19th, 2025 city council regular meeting. There are no final reading of ordinances. Eight point three is adoption of resolutions by consent with one resolution approving the allocation of round one, 2025 lodgers, tax, arts and culture funding. There are no administrative items or public hearings. Under introduction of ordinances, we have eight point six point one, which is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to sublease the upstairs offices located at eight oh two Main Street to Lucky Services LLC, the Board of Trustees for Fort Lewis College and the Durango Business Improvement District. Eight point six point two is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two. Administration, Article Two, City Council by amending Section two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section seven. Eight point six point three is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty four, Traffics and Vehicles, Article One. Application and adoption of Model Traffic Code, Section twenty four point two, Model Traffic Code adopted. Eight point six point four is introduction of an ordinance enacting a violation for parking in private parking lots or on private property. Chapter twenty four, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Three, Parking Administration and Regulation, Section twenty four dash eighty one, Parking Motor Vehicles on Private Property. And the last item is eight point seven point one, which is a request to excuse Councilor Woodruff from the February 19th, 2025 regular city council meeting.
Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull eight point six point one and eight point six point two.
Second.
That was first the motion.
And well, I'm going to second, I'm going to make a motion first. So hold on to your seats. I'd like to move the content agenda as presented with the exception of eight point six point one and eight point six point two.
I'll second.
Could, could we have a vote?
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Councilor Basman's?
May I ask you a question? Did we make a motion to consent, to approve the consent agenda minus those two items? Or did I miss that?
No, we just did.
I did. I, I said I was an idiot and then I, I said I moved and moved to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of eight point one.
Sorry about that. Yes.
And Councilor Yusuf?
Yes.
Uh, item eight point six point one is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to sublease the upstairs offices located at eight oh two Main Avenue to Lucky Services LLC, the Board of Trustees of Fort Lewis College and the Durango Business Improvement District. Councilor Basman's.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure if that would be Mike Finge.
Yeah, motion in a second to get it on the floor, but you have any discussion?
That's right. I, I, at this point, I'm not making a motion. I have questions first.
I moved to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to sublease the upstairs offices located at eight two Main Avenue to Lucky Services LLC, the Board of Trustees for Fort Lewis College and the Durango Business Improvement District.
I'll second.
If I may, I think it's to approve an introduction of an ordinance, not approve the ordinance. Sorry about that. I just want to make sure it's clear.
I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to sublease the upstairs offices located at eight oh two Main Avenue to Lucky Services LLC, the Board of Trustees for Fort Lewis College and then Durango Business Improvement District. Okay.
I'll second the amended motion.
And I can, it's, it's listed under the city attorney's office rightfully so. I can give you a little bit of background or I can just answer questions. Maybe a little bit of background. As is very apparent, the city of Durango is merging the services that were previously provided by Visit Durango into the city. As a part of that, we are taking over leases that the city of, that Visit Durango had with a property owner in the city of Durango. All leases have to be done by ordinance. This is the introduction to ordinance that allows the city to take over the leases previously held by Visit Durango with the entities that are listed there.
Thank you very much. The, the first question, I have three questions. It was two, but now it's three. On the summary of the agenda, it gives you an introduction of the ordinance. On the agenda documentation, it says the ordinance and recommended to consider the ordinance. So I think you answered the question. It's an introduction. So I suggest maybe for the actual agenda package to call that also the introduction of the ordinance. My first question is, I understand that the city manager and the city attorney and a select number of their staff have left the city hall location and currently have their offices in this welcome center area. How many offices?
Eight point six point one is, it's just a reallocation of the lease.
I am, have a question on the lease and I want to ask the question before I consider supporting the introduction of that ordinance. This is exactly about this, this ordinance and the lease. I, I cannot see how it's not directly related.
Think it's more on Mark. It just depends on where the line between an introduction of an ordinance and then actually discussing the merits of the ordinance. The introduction of the ordinance is, I recall, is just to say whether or not the, the ordinance should be introduced. The merits of what that ordinance is comes on first consideration, if, if I'm correct, Mark.
You are. I mean, the charter is pretty clear and it's all for the benefit of the public. The idea here is, is that there is a time period between when business is introduced and the public then has noticed that it's coming and then they can consider it, research it, and then they can participate when it's discussed and debated by the council at the next meeting. So we're at the step that under the charter where we're just introducing the ordinance and the threshold for moving it forward is, is low. So it's up to you guys as a council, how much discussion you want to have at introduction. But the reality is for the public, you do not want to have extensive discussion at introduction because they have no idea what you're talking about. You need to give them the time to absorb the business that will come before the council to be truly considered at the next meeting.
I, I would like to clarify the process here. There is an introduction being introduced. I have questions on the introduction being introduced that may create changes to the introduction of that ordinance, the actual language of the introduction. The, in the, the ordinance itself is already in the agenda. So if the public wants to see it come up at a future time, which will happen, they will have the same ordinance. And I am comfortable making a couple of questions right now that will determine if I support the introduction, if this ordinance or not.
I'm perfectly comfortable answering any question you might have.
Okay.
But it's up to your colleagues as to whether they decide it's appropriate at this stage or not.
At this point, we're just introducing the ordinance. It's going to be up for discussion at the next presentation.
So why is it even an agenda item if you can't even support or ask a question on the actual ordinance that are being introduced? I mean, how, how, how does that? It is so interesting.
Can you explain how the introduction of the ordinances works, please? Can you explain how the introduction of ordinances works?
Yeah. So again, we're a municipal, a home rule charter municipality. We have a charter. Our charter lays out very specific directions on how you are to process ordinances. And the idea is that, and a lot of this comes from the, this is a very old charter. It hasn't been amended, but before we had internet and computers and you could just look at things to press a button. The whole idea was to give the public an opportunity to know what business was coming before it actually got discussed. Um, and that's the reason there's an introduction required before there is a consideration. And consideration is usually the time for the debate and the questions. To Councilor Basman's point, he does, has a right to vote against introducing something. And he is certainly entitled to ask questions about that, but there is, there's a gray area. area in there as to what's too much and what's too little when it comes to considering what gets introduced. So it seems that Counselor Basmanz just has a difference of opinion, but that's, that's, that's between you guys as to how much discussion you allow introduction.
I think it's your call, Mayor Protem.
Well, you know, we've been working on following procedures and basically when we do an introduction, we just say that we're going to move forward with this. And then when it comes up for consideration, that's when we do the discussion because in the meantime, this will get published and the, uh, the public will have time to review the policies and then we'll all come back the next meeting and have questions and discussions.
And I guess the one point that I've left out, there is nothing that happens at introduction that can affect the public. You cannot take any final action at introduction. So again, it's the introducing it to the public, giving them a chance to digest what's coming, and you can't take any official action on it until you've actually considered it, which happens at the next meeting.
So all we're doing is saying that we're going to move forward with this, nay or yea. And that's what I think we should do, have a vote on moving forward with this. What is it? Eight point six point one. Could we have a vote?
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Basmanz?
Um, in case of not being well informed, I was informed that I should vote no. So I'm going to vote no.
The next item pulled was eight point six point two, an introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council by amending Section two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section seven, submitted by Counselor Yusuf. This was pulled by Counselor Basmanz.
I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council by amending Section two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section seven.
Second.
Uh, since I brought it up, uh, since I brought that ordinance forward, I will just do a quick, uh, introduction. Um, this too is for the benefit of the public. It's public notice. I think it's important for transparency, accountability, and fairness for the public and the community. Community, I believe, has a right to know if any counselor is seeking a variance on private property that they own and or have a private interest in. And also they have a right to know if the community, if, if a counselor is seeking public funds for that, uh, public piece of property. Uh, so the community is aware of any variances being sought, any public funds being, uh, granted, um, so that they can understand the impact on surrounding, uh, properties and also ensure that it's open and transparent and accountable as representatives, uh, to our constituents. That's why I brought it up. For consideration at the next meeting.
I, I have questions, so never mind. I'll do it when this is an introduction as well. So I'll follow the.
Could we have a vote?
Counselor Basmanz?
Uh, in this case, yes.
Mayor Buell? Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is ten point one, a public hearing regarding an ordinance to designate two oh one East 12th Street, the Historic High School as a historic landmark.
Okay. But in the meantime, I can introduce us. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council Daniel Murray, Community Development Department. I'm joined this evening by Savannah Lidle, who will be presenting our, on our behalf as an expert in all things historic preservation and a very exciting project.
Uh, thank you, Daniel. Good evening, Council. I'm excited to be here. Whoa. I don't know what that was. Savannah Lidle with Goff Engineering and Surveying. And I'm excited and honored this evening to present the designation of two zero one East 12th Street Historic Durango High School. As mentioned, this is the Durango Historic High School and this is the designation to Durango's Register of Historic Places. I think we're very familiar with this location, but it sits on a knoll above Buckley Park. It is in what was originally kind of considered the civic center of Durango in that here was the high school, Historic Durango High School. The Emory Smiley Junior High was behind it. Across the street was the Carnegie Library. It is adjacent to the East Third Avenue Historic District. And down to the southwest is the beginning of the Main Avenue National Register Historic District. This building is located in the downtown overlay district and as such, any exterior changes are reviewed for compliance with the downtown historic or downtown design guidelines. The designation of this building to the Durango Historic Places will not change any of the reviews or permitting processes for this building, nor will it change any review processes for the surrounding buildings, including those designated, um, on historic registers. It also will not change their eligibility for state tax or federal tax credits for historic preservation or their eligibility to receive grants. I wanted to point out that two of the buildings are not included. This is the, um, secondary school that was constructed in the 1950s that the current community development and engineering departments are located in, nor is the small boiler building to the north. Neither of these are included in the designation. I did want to point out to the rear of the building is a swimming pool addition that was constructed 10 years after the high school. This was designed by Eugene Groves, a very prominent architect in the state of Colorado. However, this is a, not even a significant work, piece of his architecture, and it has been significantly altered. There has been proposal for the demolition of this addition. This demolition would be reviewed and decided upon by the Historic Preservation Board. Staff is recommending approval of this demolition as it is not a significant piece of Eugene Grove's work, nor has it retained its integrity. Quick timeline, this building was designed and constructed in 1916, 17. As mentioned, that swimming pool was added 10 years later. The 1957 secondary school was completed. That is not part of this designation. In 1977, the high school moves out of the building. This building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places as well as the State Register of Historic Places. It has received a Colorado State Historic Fund grant for window restoration. And in nine, in 2023, City of Durango purchases this building. This is an owner initiated designation and with owner support. Statement of significance for a building to be designated on the Durango Register of Historic Places, it needs to be 50 years or older. It also needs to meet one of the criteria in three categories, history, geography, architecture, and it also has to retain its integrity. This building has been found to meet not only one criteria, but seven of the criteria as outlined in the Land Use and Development Code. The first one is architectural. It meets architectural style. This is a neoclassical style, a very common style for schools at the turn of the last century as it was thought to exude order and formality and the symmetry that was, uh, part of education. And not only its building footprint, but its architectural details, it has the neoclassical style. It's a recognized architect. It is Thomas McLaren and Charles Thomas, architects out of Colorado Springs that designed this. This was their last work together. Um, Charles, uh, Thomas went on to design the Smiley Building and Tom, or and Thomas McLaren went on to design the Elks Lodge. I don't think I can say it better than one of our Historic Preservation Board members, Karen Anisi, said this is a huge cultural heritage of our community. This was our high school for six, or the building for our high school for 60 years. So it has touched multiple lives. There's probably people listening to this right now that walk these halls and were part of the culture, um, that this building supported. And then the last criteria is a visual feature of the community. This is a landmark. You know where you are when you see this building. At the terminus of second and above Buckley Park, it is a very strong visual feature. All buildings, once they have been determined to meet criteria, are analyzed for whether or not they have their integrity. That is, does it still have its character defining features that, uh, meet this criteria? And this one very strongly does. It has little to no exterior alteration. So it does retain that integrity. The interior has been modified, um, a little bit more. Findings and recommendation of the motion, Historic Preservation Board reviewed this at their meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the proposed landmark designation with the following findings, that it was at least 50 years or older. It has maintained its integrity and the building meets the designation criteria as outlined in the Land Use and Development Code, meaning criteria A, B, and C. So recommended motion is to move to open a public hearing to consider an ordinance designating two zero one East 12th Street, the Historic Durango High School to the Durango Register of Historic Places. Thank you.
I moved to open a public hearing to consider an ordinance designating two oh one East 12th Street Historic Durango High School to the Durango Register of Historic Places.
I'll second.
Discussion? Do we have a vote?
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Basmanz?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
So. Mayor Protem, you just asked if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item.
On 11?
On the public hearing.
On the, okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak on public hearing concerning historic red, uh, designation of the Durango nine R building?
My name is Sweetie Marbury and I'm a Durango resident. What a fabulous, fabulous idea. I look forward to this. I've lived here 50 years. That building is a landmark in Durango. We all are proud of it. Many of us know people who graduated from Durango High School. I look at Historic Durango High School as a compliment that will go forward. It's a legacy for my grandchildren. I think it's a marvelous idea. I support what Karen Anisi had to say and certainly what Savannah has presented to us. I also support the two A, which would mean our city and our police department would be moving out of this building and the old worn out police department. And it would be a grand legacy for all of you who sit at the dais. Thank you.
Anybody else for, um, public comment?
No one else has signed up online either.
Okay, close to public hearing.
Good next time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next item is 11 point one, uh, Resolution R 2025 0019 of Public Censure and Public Reprimand of Counselor Basmanz for acting in a manner unbecoming of a counselor, bringing disrepute to the Durango City Council and issuing a letter of apology to the Assistant City Manager and Chief of Police, uh, submitted by Counsel, uh, Mayor Protem Yasi.
It's, it, yes. Would you want to? Okay. I make a motion to accept Resolution R 2025 0019 of Public Censure and Public Repromen of Counselor Basmanz. For acting in a manner unbecoming of a counselor, bringing disrepute to the Durango City Council and issuing a letter of apology to the Assistant City Manager and Police Chief.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion, please. Oh, second, okay. I was, okay.
Excuse me, second.
Okay, second. And then may I make an amendment, please? I'd like to please remove from the resolution the statement, Counselor Olivia Basmanz is here after ineligible to serve as mayor, Mayor Protem, any leadership position on the council, any representative position of the council and/or any subcommittee of the council.
All righty, I accept that friendly motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think it's important for all city councils to retain the ability to engage our community through various forms, such as being mayor, Mayor Protem, and boards and commissions appointments. Additionally, we have at least one new city councilor coming on board in about a month and they should be all, also a part of these conversations around appointments and positions held. I think this is potentially a step too far and I think it goes against the public interest.
Are you gonna?
No, go ahead.
What's yours, is your, um, agenda item? I'm not sure if you wish to speak first.
Go ahead.
You don't want to speak to your own agenda?
I, I brought it.
Okay, I'm, uh, first of all, I want to reconfirm everything that I said during that meeting is true and correct, and I really hope that anybody interested will listen to that meeting. It will show you the level of dishonesty, false information, and unethical behavior by some of the other people in our government. Unfortunately, I need to address the dishonesty taking place. It weighs heavy on my shoulders. As a counselor, I'm putting myself out there by choice, knowing that, you know, knowingly expose myself, no matter how ridiculous it is. But I have three children and when they apply after, to a job after college and an employer Googles their name, they will think I'm a, it's a criminal family because of all the lies and defamation that is taking place right now and in this censure. I cannot accept this and I have no choice but to take action depending on how this develops. So what is this censure about? I stand by my statements, which in summary are that I think we should never have had the friction with the county and started that litigation, that the proposed solution for jail services is not a long-term solution, uh, and that part of the executive session was not recorded and it should have been recorded. And I later clarified that a large part was spoken by the city manager, uh, Assistant City Manager and Police Chief during the non-recorded part of the meeting. There are two items that are important here. The first, I said that a large part was spoken by these individuals. That is not a lie. They spoke for a large part during the non-recorded part of the executive session. It is Major Jeff, Mayor Jessica Buell, who actually made a false statement saying that I said that they spoke for a large majority. And then she went off repeating this large majority liar. How is that a large majority, a barrage of insults? Well, I did not say it, a large majority. I really don't care or put much value if, if they spoke for 10 or 15 minutes out of the 35 minutes or so. It's a large part. Same as a large part of our residents in the county are Native American, not a majority, and that's not what I said. A large part of the woman in the U.S. get exposed to some sort of sexual harassment, not saying it's a majority. The second issue is that they believe that I alleged or insinuate, insinuated there were violations because the police, police chief, Assistant City Manager and the City Manager spoke during the executive session. I never alleged that. I didn't, don't, even now I don't do that. The issue I voiced is that this meeting was not recorded and it should have been recorded, especially since other people beside the city attorney spoke and it should have been recorded. There are, these are two very different issues. Speaking during an executive session, which is a lot more flexible, as if it stays within the scope, versus not recording an executive session. And I have no issues with the police, what the police chief or the assistant manager said. If anything, I'm bothered with what the city manager said and I'm not, still not alleging that that was a violation. But an executive session recording may only be stopped under specific circumstances and the recording was stopped by Mayor Buell and recommended by the city attorney. To explain this to anybody here, uh, regular city council, regular meetings are and must be recorded and they are available to the public. Executive sessions are somewhat different. They are closed meetings that must be recorded and only under specific circumstances may the recording be stopped. And I emphasize may be stopped. It is not required. It may be under specific circumstances be stopped. And the recording is not available to the public, only if there's a challenge. And with certain people, like a judge, listen to the recording and determine if there's any action. My statements during that meeting are that I think the recording should not have stopped. And my concern is that those circum, specific circumstances, turn of the recording may have not been met because the other people spoke. I'm going to jump to the next one. I'm gonna jump to the next one. This, this actually brings me to this actual resolution. The language of the censure and the way it's been brought forward...
You have 30 seconds.
It is filled with falsehoods and violations of our charter and code of ordinance. In specific, it is in violation of numerous sections of Chapter 2, Article Roman Number 7 of our Code of Ordinance as well. And I'll be very specific to this one. It is in violation of Chapter 2, Article Roman 2, Section 2-19B, Article Roman 6, first bullet point. This resolution should be dismissed immediately. Anyone voting in favor, having been informed here? I want to finish my sentence, please. Okay, there we go.
Could I take a moment here? And... The reason why I think this resolution is worthy is the fact that as a city of Durango, we are very cautious with our employees. And what had happened after the last meeting was that Counselor Bozemanz accused our city manager, assistant city manager, our police chief, and our attorney of lying.
Point of order. I did not state that. I can make a point of order. I did not state that, and you are lying.
And the reason this is relevant right now is the fact that through those actions, he created a hostile workplace for our employees. And as a city council, we're responsible for the actions of our city council and also to make sure that our staff feels confident and secure coming to work, and they're not being, they're not facing a hostile workplace. So that's one reason. The second reason is when we go into executive sessions, normally they're to discuss, and always they're to discuss pertinent information that the councillors need to make decisions on. And when we go ahead and get strategy and information from our attorney, we usually turn the tape recorders off because that's not... Well, I think you can explain that better, I think, at this point, before I say something wrong. Would you mark?
Sure. And I did provide a memo to the council today about the specific statutes that allow executive sessions to take place, the fact that they're required to be recorded, and if there's a special exception for stopping the recording when the attorney recommends it be stopped because he's giving legal advice. My suggestion at this point, considering the comments that have been made today, is that you make that memorandum a part of the minutes, and that you make the affidavits that I mentioned at the last meeting and provide it to you tonight a part of the minutes. That way, sworn affidavits about what happened are in the record. They're in the minutes. They're subject to anyone looking at them, whether they choose to, and my memo explaining the rules. What'd you guys say up here? You know, you say what you say, but you need to attach to them. That's, this is a record, but having official sworn affidavits put into the record would be my recommendation at this point.
All righty, so let's submit the sworn affidavits by our four employees, and the affidavit that you wrote about, the memo you wrote about executive sessions be added to the minutes. Okay, so at this point, do we have any more discussion on this?
I will take my next three minutes to respond to what was said.
Did you get two? You're already gone.
Why do I get two?
I think it's three minutes.
Okay, three. Okay, three.
So I have explained exactly what violations are taking place in this resolution, in this censure, and the way it's been brought forward. Any councillor that willingly and knowingly votes in favor of this resolution intentionally violates our laws and codes and ordinances. I want to make very clear, because there will be consequences on that. And the other thing I will say, what is really going on? There's a recording. There's transcripts. The censure is filled with lies. You even quote again something that is not true. Aggressive language to the media and so on. On the surface, to me, it's obvious to influence the election. But it's so full of dishonesty and extreme aggressive language to the extent that it's certain there will be a reaction from me. There's gonna be more friction, more discussion. This is going statewide. Discussion on us working together, media coverage. But the real issue is not the censure. That is a distraction from the city's attorney's actions. Maybe the issue that we have could be the friction with the county. The city attorney recommended drafted strong word letters, restraining order lawsuits, and we lost. That is embarrassing. A lot of wasted time and money, taxpayers' money. In my opinion, what is probably the real issue at this point, seeing the aggressive way that this is being brought forward, is that the executive session recording was stopped, recommended by the city attorney, and we have completely distracted away from that. I feel at this point absolutely convinced that the fact that this executive session recording was stopped is in violation of Colorado Open Meeting Laws and CORA. And that would be a very serious violation that I believe should be investigated further so that council is well-informed. I'm not an attorney, and our city attorney, Mark Morgan, certainly cannot at this point be objective or unbiased, given that he's partly, if not fully, responsible for the censure language and for these potential OML and CORA violations.
I guess I will just add that, in my opinion, the real issue, Counselor Bozemanz, is the censure. This is the second time as a council that we've had to bring admonishment up of your actions in a public setting. And this is the second time. You're stating violations of an executive session. All four city councillors that were present in that room disagreed with you. Our city manager disagreed with you. Our city attorney disagreed with you. Our chief of police disagreed with you, and our assistant city manager disagreed with you. Every individual in the room disagreed with you. You're stating that there's dishonesty. There's eight individuals who sat in that room that disagree with you and that feel that what you are bringing forward is untrue. And that was what was trying to be brought forth in the last meeting, that the statements that you were making were a fabrication and an attempt to insinuate that illegal activity took place when we were following state statute by the rules and by rules that govern what we can do in executive session. We were told in that executive session by our city attorney that we were following the state rules. You disagreed with that. You have that right. We voted to stop the recording. You did. And that took place, and that recording was stopped. Receiving legal advice from our city attorney does not... There are certain options where that does not have to be recorded under state law, and that is what we were following. And I just want to reiterate that every single individual in the room, with the exception of yourself, felt that when you came back out into the room and made those statements, they were inappropriate, and they were wrong. And that is exactly why this issue is in front of us today, the censure of you.
Any more discussion? Okay, no discussion. Vote.
I have a vote on 11.1 with the amendment. Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bozemanz?
No.
Next item is 11.2, Resolution R. 2025-0023, authorizing the mayor and the police chief to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of City of Durango sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center.
Mayor and council, one second, as Tom pulls up the presentation. Thank you very much, mayor and council. What we have in front of you is a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute intergovernmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of City of Durango sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center. I would also point out that we do have our police chief, Bryce Current, our assistant city manager, Bob Brammer, as well as our city attorney, Mark Morgan, who we all worked on together on this, along with the judge, Matt Margeson, in trying to come up with some solutions in regards to our sentenced municipal sentence offenders. What you have right here in front of you is just the summary of the intergovernmental agreement negotiations. I think for most of us, it's been in the paper enough that we don't really have to go blow line item by line item on it. But does just show that this part of our jail services started in August. We kind of went through in November, trying to work it out, looking for a 90-day extension. Ultimately, the jail IGA was canceled from the county with 30 days' notice. We did think that we had in December, an effort to, after having multiple meetings, an effort to have a proposed jail IGA, jail services IGA for the council to approve at the January 21st, 2025 meeting. We were notified that that would appear to be overly ambitious. Therefore, we had to look at other avenues in going. In February 2025, specifically on February 10th, city staff did meet with the Archuleta County staff with the sheriff's office, as well as the Archuleta County attorney, to discuss a proposed agreement. They did forward us a proposed agreement on February 26th that we were okay with operationally, and Mark was okay with legally. Therefore, we have a proposed IGA for the council to vote on. Just a little bit of what this actually does. The housing agreement, the Archuleta Sheriff retains discretion based on security, medical needs, and facility capacities. So the county sheriff of Archuleta does have that discretion. This would only be for municipal sentenced inmates only. This would not include our failure-toappear warrants. Those would be continued to be handled by our police department. We are doing those as we see, also with the holding cells that we have in the police department, as well as three springs if necessary. The failure-toappear is usually what causes the most of the action that we had seen in regards to the usage of the La Plata County Jail. Those parts now are going to be taken for us. We will provide transportation for inmates to Archuleta County Jail and back to Durango after the sentence is completed. The financial terms, that's a mistake. Sorry about that. It was 110 is the daily rate per inmate that Archuleta County is, not 100. It's adjustable annually. This does include meals, security, and routine medical care. Anything outside of that, we would be billed for, which is common if there's something that's a little bit more complex than what's routine. The monthly billing with a 30-day payment requirement. It is a two-year term with an optional two-year renewal, and either party may terminate with 14 days' notice. The one thing to put up on this is it still does have to go to the Archuleta County Board of County Commissioners. We would be the first one to sign it, which is usually customary in having the last party be the one that signs it to completely complete the executed IGA. Estimated cost savings, so just to kind of talk a little bit of what we actually use for municipal offenders. Last year, working with Chief Current and the judge, they were able to say that we actually had just a total of 10 inmates that were sentenced in the last calendar year for a total of 81 days. La Plata County proposed a rate of 198.08, which would be total about $16,000 if we used the proposed agreement in which La Plata County was proposing in their rate. With the Archuleta County proposed rate of 110, that would actually total $8,910. Looking at the transportation costs, 10 round trips back and forth would be about 2,280 miles if we just use the IRS standard mileage rate. At 70 cents per mile, that's a transportation cost of about $1,500, $1,600. Even with that added on, you can still see that the cost for the Archuleta County is still significantly less for us. With that being said, the staff recommends the city council move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of City of Durango municipal sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center.
Move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of City of Durango municipal sentenced offenders as the Archuleta County Detention Center.
Second.
I have a small question on this resolution and the agreement. Is this an agreement that can be terminated immediately? Let's say a new city council is in place, and within a day, we have an agreement with La Plata County on the jail services. Would we be stuck with a two-year agreement? Or can we cancel it without penalty, without...
Putting it back on the Slide 4, which I have for the public as well, so they can see under term and termination. It does have an either party may terminate with 14 days' notice.
Thank you.
Well, I might, I guess I might make a couple comments. I guess I just want to say that I think an agreement with Archuleta County provides a reliable alternative for the City of Durango to house Durango municipal offenders. It allows us to continue to enforce our specialty court program, which has proven to be very successful in protecting the quality of life of our Durango residents, and help ensure that our most vulnerable get the help and assistance that they need. This program has proven to be very efficient and effective for our community, and one which the city definitely wants to continue. And that was why we were so truly disappointed and devastated when La Plata County stopped suggesting, saying that they would no longer accept our low-level municipal offenders. I think it is really wonderful that we have such strong relationships with our neighboring communities that are willing to step up and help the city during a time of need. And I want to thank Archuleta County in advance for their willingness to engage in these conversations so quickly and providing us with options to continue our programs. Our specialty court program in Durango is very important and helpful, and that is why it was truly devastating to hear that the county and the sheriff here in our own community would no longer accept these low-level municipal offenders. So I just think it's a wonderful alternative for us, and I want to thank our city manager for working so hard in getting this agreement to move forward. So thank you.
Definitely a team effort. I want to make sure Bryce gets a lot of kudos on that. He has established a really good relationship with the Archuleta County Sheriff and was a pivotal part in making that happen. So I want to make sure Bryce gets credit for that as well. Thank you, chief.
Thank you as well, Bryce. It's really important. And again, such an important program for our entire community and for the residents. So I think, I want to thank you guys a lot for this effort, and thank Archuleta County for their consideration.
Thank you, Melissa, for stating all those reasons. You know, I'm really satisfied with this resolution also because we're working with our partners in southwestern Colorado. And I'm thankful that Archuleta County is willing to step up and give us a hand at this point. Because our municipal offenders are getting the help they need. We're not throwing them in jail. They're getting the services through the court and through whatever the community provides. So I'm in favor of this ordinance recommendation. Okay, any more? Do we have a vote?
Oh, I... Shall I do? I, you know, I'm critical and analytical. I'm just gonna throw this out there. This is not a solution. This is a patch. The numbers we are seeing, the savings, it's not savings. You can, 10 trips for, what was it? 10 trips for 80 days? I think 80 days in presence. 10 trips. Is that correct?
It's on your screen, sir.
I was just asking you. I'm sorry. 10 round trips. So if I have a police officer that does a round trip to pick him up and a round trip to drop him off, I assume that takes two round trips. You already doubled it. The time for staff. I can go on and on. This is so misleading. But I do, will, I will support this resolution because we have been in a, we have chosen a pathway as a council that gives us no other option. So that's why I will support it. But, oh my gosh.
I would just suggest, if I can, in response, that I don't think it's misleading. The numbers here are very clear to me. We're not doing this to save money. We're doing this to continue the programs that we currently have in place. This is the option that is in front of us because we are not able to do it with La Plata County at this time.
I would say that it's not just about cost savings also. To your point earlier, Counselor Youssef, it's about quality of life. It's about quality of life for everybody in our community, not just the people that pay property taxes, but also the people that don't necessarily have access to services. And so being able to continue the services of our specialty court, I think is incredibly important. When we were able to get Judge Margeson into his current role as municipal judge, what a game changer in just a very short year that he's been able to really create substantive change that have really moved the needle about how we... create substantive change that have really moved the needle about how we are addressing a need in our community. So I agree. I think this is a quality of life for, for these folks that may not know, may not have access, may not have the ability to reach out to these resources. That now we have a mechanism and an inflection point to be able to introduce them to resources. That's the critical point, I think, for me is that it's not just cost savings. It's not misleading. I really feel like we can continue the good work that, that Judge Margeson has incorporated. Again, just a very short year and to really continue to push the envelope about how we addressing, how we are addressing this critical need in our community.
Can I just add one thing that just you guys haven't said it yet? This resolution, and we keep saying, oh, we lost the case, we lost the case. We didn't lose a case. We had a preliminary hearing. We were negotiating with Archuleta County at the time. We dismissed our case because this solution was on the table. So if this passes, not only does it solve the problem with the municipal court, it completely alleviates the need to go forward with that litigation. We didn't lose, we dismissed it, we dismissed it without prejudice, means we can bring it back again if we chose to. But this is an alternate solution that we discussed partially in executive session to the litigation. So that point hadn't been made yet, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record.
Thank you, Mark. Could we get a vote?
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is item 12.1, First Consideration of an Ordinance Establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, Appointing a Prosperity Officer and Creating Divisions of Economic Opportunity, Innovating Housing Solutions and Destination Marketing and Management with Mike French.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Mike French, Prosperity Officer, here to discuss information regarding the first consideration of ordinance, establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter, Article 2, Section 11, Paragraph A. The collective mission of housing, tourism and economic opportunity strongly aligns with the city vision of a multi-generational community which is authentic, diverse, engaged, thriving and environmentally responsible. And that collective mission is to enhance the quality of life of the residents and celebrate a multi-generational community by promoting equitable access to attainable housing, fostering inclusive economic growth and elevating the city as a vibrant destination. If I look at all three of these specific divisions, these specific disciplines, each one of them strongly aligns with the city vision. And I'm not going to go through these nine points that I extracted that, that really represent the alignment of the vision. But the emphasis here is that in today's landscape, in a post pandemic economy, all three of these are, are really interdependent. They can no longer be looked at independently to, to be extremely successful. This is best represented by this Venn diagram. If we look at the objective of economic opportunity, which is business and job growth, the objective of innovative housing solutions, which is workforce housing and affordability, and the objective of destination marketing and management, which is sustainable tourism, these are all highly interdependent. That means that housing is an economic enabler. Tourism is one third of our workforce. And we got cut off on the bottom of the slide. I'll move on. There is collaboration, efficiency and economies of scale in all three of these. This enables collaboration of, of all the entities that are no longer independent. Efficiencies and how we use common platforms and process and economies of scale in fiscal and asset operations, access to data, data analytics, metrics and operations. As an example of what the, what the organization flow chart, or I'm sorry, org chart would look like, we've diagrammed this and color coded it. In the dark green is destination, marketing and management. The lighter green is innovative housing solutions. And then the gray is economic opportunity. At this time, staff would like to make a recommendation to move to approve the first consideration of an ordinance establishing Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer and creating division of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter, Article 2, Section 11, Paragraph A.
I move to approve an introduction of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer.
Sorry, Counselor, this is for consideration.
Consideration, yeah. Oh, first consideration, no, okay. I'm going to get this right at some point tonight. I move to approve a first consideration of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter, Article 2, Section 2, Paragraph A.
I'll second.
I just want, oh yeah, sure. I just want to say I've had the fortune of knowing Mike for a really long time and knowing your capacity at the Economic Development Alliance, really to be able to leverage your skill set, broad, very broad skill set and able to take that into the city. I'm very excited to see where we can take this, this office and to really create tangible results for the, for the community and the constituents. So I'm really happy that this is going to be, you know, considered today. And then moving forward, hopefully get this into reality. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree. It's been really great having you a part of the City of Durango leadership team. And it is nice to see what the recommendations that you're bringing forward. I think they're going to be, they seem like very efficient and effective means of addressing some of our key priorities in our community. And for the City of Durango that we've been really striving to reach for quite a long time. So I do too as well. I look forward to seeing what comes of this, if this is further approved. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've presented to the council this past, past year. It's just amazing. And I'm glad that you have a broad knowledge of all these areas because it adds to our knowledge base here. So thank you very much. Any more discussion?
Mayor Protem, I sincerely appreciate the comments. I'd like to remind council that this is a, a very team centric effort. There are three divisions that have all really contributed to this. And so although I get to stand here and I have the privilege to stand here, there is a tremendous amount of, of support and people that have gotten us to this point.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Item 12.2 is First Consideration of an Ordinance to Establish a Tourism Commission Through the Creation of the Prosperity Office.
Get there. Thank you. Again, Mike French, Prosperity Officer, here to give information regarding the first consideration of an ordinance to establish a tourism commission through the creation of the prosperity office. Like to highlight our city mission, vision and values. I believe this tourism commission will fall strongly in line with all of these, specifically the mission, vision and values of teamwork, professionalism, respect and service. I've read this, but I will talk just a little bit more about the how of the mission. The how is we will do this by enabling diverse housing opportunities, building effective partnerships, strengthening, strengthening local businesses and celebrate our unique culture to attract visitors and enrich the lives of those that call our city home, which is the collective mission of the Prosperity Office. The tourism commission's objective and role, functions and duties is to, one, advise the city council and mayor on strategies to enhance and involve the city's tourism industry, to provide recommendations on how to effectively promote the city as a tourist destination through targeted marketing campaigns, outreach initiatives and strategic partnerships. And last, to develop and recommend policies related to the sustainable growth of the tourism industry, considering economic and environmental impacts. If you think about the both internal and external stakeholders that are involved in tourism, destination marketing, destination management, we have our visitors, the central and, and, and local government, local residents, which is really important to consider, the tourism, tourism industry stakeholders and the wider business community. So how do we ensure proper representation of a diverse community stakeholders in the development of a tourism commission? The structure that we're recommending is a balanced tourism commission that represents a majority that are non tourism industry members, five members being one, Fort Lewis College, two, member of the Chamber of Commerce, representing the business community, and three, members at large from the community. We would, the asterix represents board members that we would potentially pull over from the existing visitor angle board that are in place today. The four minority members of the tourism commission that represent the tourism industry are one, representing attraction or a food and beverage, two, a hotelier motel, three, purgatory resort, and four, Durango Silverton narrow gauge train. The timeline is the first consideration of the ordinance is tonight, March 4th, 2025. The final consideration of the ordinance would be March 11th, a week from tonight, 2025. The assignment of the tourism commission staff liaison would happen once the ordinance is, is realized, which is estimated at March 24th, 10 days post final consideration. The open application for tourism commission would follow in line with the rest of the other commissions and boards that the council appoints, which is April 7th through 30th of open applications. The council interviews would take place May 2nd through May 16th. And the tourism commission members would be approved at council on May 20th or June 3rd, depending on the timeline, with, with, with terms, specific terms for each specific seat. The tourism commission would then be slated to be seated on June 1st, 2025. With that, staff is making a recommendation to approve the first consideration of an ordinance establishing a tourism commission through the creation of a prosperity office.
I move to approve a first consideration of an ordinance to establish a tourism commission through the creation of the prosperity office.
Second.
Yes, I can start. It's been, been interesting to see the evolution of the, the tourism or visit Durango office come through the years. And I think it's a really great opportunity for us as a city to help shape how we look at tourism for our community, not only for the people coming in, but also for the constituents and the community members that, that reside here. There's been this kind of push pull quite a bit between, you know, we seem to have this binary, two schools of thought of like pro tourism and anti tourism. And I'm really looking forward to continuing this conversation about how we address tourism, which is such an important and vibrant part of our economy, and hopefully be able to find a good middle road between the people that, that really advocate for the interest of tourism and those that are little, you know, and, you know, are little, you know, you know, they don't care for it as much as, as, as other people would. So I'm looking forward to seeing how we are going to move forward and the continued evolution of, of tourism in, in La Plata County and Durango specifically. So thanks.
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Okay, could we get a vote?
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
The next item is 12.3, First Consideration of an Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Ordinance 01992-29 and Ordinance 01998-1 for the purposes of amending the composition of the Board of Directors of the Firefighters Old Hire Pension Plan and declaring an effective date. I don't have a particular presentation on this item. However, both this item and 12.4 are modifications to existing ordinances for the old hire pension plans for the firefighters and police to allow additional members of the board to maintain a quorum so that the board can continue to conduct business as a great deal of the members of the board are aging and sometimes unable to attend meetings.
Great. I move to approve a first consideration of an ordinance amending and supplementing ordinance O1992-29 and ordinance O-1998-1 for the purpose, purposes of amending the composition of the Board of Directors of the Firefighters Old Hire Pension Plan and declaring an effective date.
I'll second.
I'll for evoke Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Item 12.4 is the additional item I discussed. First consideration of an ordinance amending and supplementing ordinance 01990-19, ordinance 1994-24 and ordinance 1998-2 for the purposes of amending the composition of the Board of the Directors of the Police Officers Old Hire Pension Plan and declaring an effective date. That's the same item, the same type of item, this is the first one.
I move to approve the first consideration of an ordinance amending and supplementing ordinance O-1990-19, ordinance O-1994-24 and ordinance O1998-2 for the purposes of amending the composition of the Board of Directors and the Police Officers Old Hire Pension Plan and declaring an effective date.
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Yasi? Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Next item is 12.5, First Consideration of an Ordinance for the City of Durango and La Plata County Joint Annexation Petition of County Roads 250 and 251.
Mayor and council, just a bit, we did have a public hearing at the last city council meeting. So very similar to what's going to happen with the historic building. They just have a motion to consider and move forward. But however, understanding that Counselor Youssef and Counselor Woodruff, you weren't here at the last meeting, we thought it was pertinent to go ahead and just do the presentation that was done at the public hearing so that you're informed as well.
Okay, thank you. Daniel Murray with Community Development. I will resume a presentation that some of you saw, but others did not. So this is a consideration. We did the public hearing in February and now we're doing first consideration of an ordinance. This is a proposal to annex a portion of the road shown in blue. This extends from Holly up to the intersection of 250 to 51. Zooming in a little further, this is one of two parts of the road. So here you see the Holly segment of the road and everything in blue is proposed for annexation. The yellow line shows contiguity and contiguity is important, that I'll get to that in a minute. Here's our second segment of the road leading up to the intersection of 250 to 51. And here we see almost all of it is contiguous to city limits with a few, just two exceptions for parcels there in the intersection. This is an existing condition, so a road that we're all familiar with. It lacks many modern improvements such as curb and gutter, shoulder, drainage improvements, any, and landscaping. The proposed road cross section is one that we actually don't have to spend too much time looking at in plan because it exists half. looking at in plan because it exists halfway today. Here we see in the foreground, phase one of the road improvements that we were able to accomplish over 2024, and then in the background, the existing road condition. So here is the curb and gutter, the very wide bike lane, which is a lot like Florida, where it has a concrete drain pan that allows a cyclist not to be between asphalt and concrete, rather, it's just one continuous surface, two 11-foot travel lanes, and at times we have a center median. The infrastructure on the left side is really important to note, a big component of what's occurring here is stormwater improvements, which don't currently exist, it's all handled by ditches. So with the city improvements, we have curb, gutter, and drain inlets. Again, the existing conditions, but this is useful to show the 10-foot multi-use path on the left side of your screen, similar to what goes on in Florida. And this is a bit of what the road will look like in time, landscaping is mature, you have your multi-use path, landscaping, strip, and then bike lane, center lane, median, and another lane. So, background and proposal, this is a partnership between the city and the county to annex the road. Both parties recognize that the road is important for public safety and that with improved infrastructure like a road comes economic opportunity. So we see that with the addition of sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike lanes, and the drainage improvements, and a road such as this, which is an arterial, has the potential to increase housing stock when development follows. It can create employment opportunities, which in turn generates sales tax that benefit both city and county. A year ago, the two parties enter into what's known as an intergovernmental agreement, and the IGA committed to this process as well as the funding of the improvements. And this enabled the city to proceed with what is halfway under construction. Both the city and the county have properties to be annexed here, so that's why we're both parties to this, it's about seven acres. This process predates maybe all of us, it goes back to 2014 when the need was identified, it's been through one road design before, we did a redesign in 2021, and that is what is the current proposal. I mentioned the intergovernmental agreement in 2024, road construction began last year, and your Community Development Commission also provided a recommendation to council in support of this annexation. In December, we received the joint annexation petitions, one from the city, signed on behalf of city manager in his capacity, and the other from the board of county commissioners. I included in your packet the agenda item for the B O C C, just as a reference point, where they authorized their city manager to sign the annexation petition. We introduced, or should I say, we accept the petitions and set a hearing date on January 7th. February 19th, we introduced the ordinance and conducted a public hearing, we continued the first consideration tonight. So this is where we are, first consideration, if we take action, we'll go to final consideration next week, and then the ordinance is effective 10 days after your approval. There are four criteria, I mentioned that important yellow line, it needs to be at least one-sixth contiguous to the city, in this case, it's 36% contiguous. You need to have at least 50% of landowners, in this case, we have 100% city and county. And these next two, the next one in particular is a bit of a statutory cumbersome word, it says, is it of community interest? It's often structured that we're not annexing roads, but we're annexing land. So is the land, the community that we're annexing, is it in our interest? And that is certainly, is it capable of being integrated into the city, which is the case here, it's almost perceived to be part of the city. And lastly, are we adjacent to and not more than three miles from the city that has been met? So two levels to which we can evaluate this, we have strategic plan, it's meeting multiple goals for organizational stewardship, innovative housing, and economic development, as well as reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Our comprehensive plan calls this road as a priority road network, and it's been identified for quite a while as a need for road improvements, and our comp plan references our regional transportation plan, again, underscoring the importance of this road. And I've mentioned how these road improvements lead to economic opportunities and housing development. We did not receive any formal public comments, so nothing I could put in your packet, although as notice has gone out through the stages, I've gotten multiple inquiries from the public, and for good reason, there's questions surrounding, well, what does this mean? And the biggest one I've been able to share is, we're not annexing anyone's property, it's just the road. With the road, though, we will need to readdress it, it's going to become 32nd Street, and 251 will have a name, or 250, I should say, will have a dedicated name, and we'll come back and do a resolution to dedicate the road name, address plan, all that needs to be worked out. So good questions come up, well, does that change my taxes? No. Does it make me eligible for city water and sewer rates? Still in the county, can I vote? Still, you're still in the county, is the bottom line. So even though we're just taking the road and the address changes, it doesn't affect anyone's use of their property or what they know it to be. I mentioned, two weeks ago, we did a public hearing, so this is a recap of that presentation, and that brings us up to where we are tonight, which is a first consideration of the ordinance for annexation.
I move to approve the first consideration of an ordinance amending and, no. Gosh, sorry. All right, first consideration, okay, I move to approve a first consideration of ordinance for the City of Durango and La Plata County Joint Annexation and Petition of County Roads 250 and 251.
Second.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi? Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is 12.6, First Consideration of an Ordinance to Designate 201 East 12th Street Historic High School Building as a Historic Landmark.
City staff as well as Savannah, our consultant, are available for any questions if you have them. The presentation you recall already, let us know if you have questions.
Questions?
It's ready for a motion.
I move to approve a first consideration of designate 201 East 12th Street Historic High School as a Historic Landmark.
Second.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi? Next item is 12.7, First Consideration of an Ordinance Amending in Pertinent Part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Noise, Section 16-9, Exterior Loudspeakers.
I move to approve a first consideration of an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Noise, Section 16-9, Exterior Loudspeakers.
I think I explained this introduction, but there was a discrepancy between the criminal code, which prohibited exterior loudspeakers, and the land development use code, and it was difficult for staff to pick and choose and apply with those two different ordinances out there. So what we did was, we, this is an amendment to the criminal section that excludes the amplification of music at any commercial establishment that has a business permit to provide for customers in an area where they want to amplify music. The music is not unlimited, it still falls under the restrictions of decibel levels and hours and things like that. So it's just a clarification of our ordinance system that was causing some confusion over at ComDev. And for people with businesses.
Any discussion? Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi? Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is public comment on city manners not scattered for a vote tonight. Could we have the recording, Tom, please? We have four people signed up to speak, Mayor Protam. The first is Tiffany Chacon.
Hello and good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. I want to thank you so much for giving me time to chat with you, three minutes tonight. My name is Tiffany Chacon. I am not a City of Durango resident. I do live in the county, and I do work within our public school system here, as well as serve many other organizations here in the City of Durango. I do work with the La Plata Food Equity Coalition, and we've been working on childcare access for the members of our community for the past couple of years. First off, I do want to thank you so much for working so hard on the strategic investment plan for childcare that was presented earlier this meeting, earlier this meeting, thank you. This is a very powerful and well-crafted plan that outlines specific actionable steps to really address our community's childcare crisis. And I really appreciate your leadership in recognizing this and actually putting that work forward. It really is commendable. Now, as we look ahead, we really must continue to work together to turn this plan into real lasting change. Childcare is not just a concern for families with young children, it actually impacts all of our employers, our businesses, and the entire Durango community. Again, as was outlined in that earlier presentation, when we had those stark numbers of how many employers are facing difficulties due to childcare. When families struggle to find reliable, affordable care, our workforce is affected and our economy suffers. I do have a comment that I'd like to read from a City of Durango resident. She says, hi, my name is Nelva, and I appreciate that you are taking the time to listen to us about our community's needs. My daughter, my daughter-in-law, and I would like to work here in Durango, but we do not have affordable daycare. If we had affordable daycare, we could have jobs and contribute to the economy. It is very important for our community if the city would help to fund this project. Having good daycare would be good for the employers and the community. She says thank you for her time. The strategic investment plan identifies a very clear need for $800,000 in public sector funding to launch critical initiatives starting in 2026. And today, I urge the City of Durango to highly consider allocating a portion of your discretionary funding in the upcoming annual budget to support these initiatives. Addressing this crisis requires consistent, dedicated investment, not just one-time efforts. By taking action now, Durango has the opportunity to be a leader in our state in solving the childcare crisis and creating a city where families and businesses truly can succeed. Everything that you talked about, it all comes back to the same thing. We need our people to be able to live here, to be able to thrive. I thank you so much for your time, for your commitment to this issue, and for being a part of this solution. Thank you all.
The next person signed up to speak is Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I'm a Durango resident. I have two issues tonight. You've heard them before, so I'm still going to keep talking about it. Drought and fire are on everyone's mind. Five years ago, the city was on a path to get water from Lake Nighthorse, and now, five years later, nothing has happened. City residents are paying for that water with our water bills. Prior councils recognized the importance of water to save our city from fire. I will remind the council and city council candidates who are here that during the 416 fire, there was not enough water in the tanks to protect the businesses and the homes in Durango. We asked Governor Hickenlooper for help and to be able to take more water out of the Animus River, and that request was granted. Nothing has changed. Drought and fire are in our future, and that should scare everyone who's sitting in this building. I'm asking for a study session to educate the city council on water engineering from Lake Nighthorse. Bob Wolf and Steve Harris are water experts on Lake Nighthorse. Get your water experts here to understand the needs for the engineering of getting water out of Nighthorse. My second topic is accessory dwelling units. And fairness, in 2014, the city council initiated accessory dwelling units regulations, and we established lot sizes, E and 1 on the east side, 5,000 square feet, E and 2 and 3 in Anima City, 7,000 square feet, and south of college, no lot size requirements. Equal opportunity to build an accessory dwelling unit using existing infrastructure is just smart. It provides income for the homeowner and additional housing stock for renters. ADU fairness is important for your legacy. I'm asking for a change in the land use code to eliminate lot sizes. A garage apartment, a small separate unit of 500 square feet can provide needed housing, and that has been a concern of city councils. Accessory dwelling unit fairness and equity for homeowners is just that, it's fair and it's equitable. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Yazi, we have two additional people signed up to speak, and both indicated they will be speaking in Spanish. There may be a slight delay in getting that translation going. The first is Maira Gallardo, I'm sorry if I butchered that, and she is in person, I believe.
So, Mayor Protam, just one quick second, before we have this comment made, we're going to need to bring the interpreters out of their channel into an attendee status, then back to presenter, and then they will have to do sequential translation. I am sure they're listening right now, so Liz and Bee, just sit tight, and I will get you promoted to present status.
In addition, Mayor Protam Yazi, in the past, I believe council has allotted additional time allowing for that sequential translation, but that would require a motion from council.
I move to allow for six minutes.
I'm sorry, who did the second?
So Liz and Bee, you're both presenters right now, your mics are hot, so if you could explain that to the woman who needs the help with the sequential translation, that'd be great.
Yes. And Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Perfect. This is Vitor Reci, can you all hear me in this space? Perfect.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody.
Muchas gracias consejeros de la ciudad.
Thank you all so much.
Por la oportunidad de poder alzar nuestras voces y ser escuchadas en este plan estratégico.
Thank you so much for allowing us to use our voices and that you're listening to our voices as we discuss the strategic plan.
Mi nombre es Mayra Gallardo.
My name is Mayra Gallardo.
Trabajo en el equipo de Voces de la Comunidad con el Grupo de Cuidado Infantil y Salud Mental.
I work with the Community Voices Group dedicated to finding childcare as well as mental health.
Y quiero hacerles ver la gran oportunidad de seguir invirtiendo en el cuidado infantil.
And I want you all to see the great opportunity that you have to continue investing in childcare.
Ya que si seguimos apoyando en este tema, lograremos tener una mejor economía.
Because if we continue to invest in this, in this area, we'll continue to have a growing economy.
En nuestro hermoso lugar de Durango.
In this beautiful place that we call home, Durango.
Ya que quitaremos peso extra familias, aliviando un poco el estrés y el cómo afecta su salud mental.
We'll be able to provide a better living environment and remove the weight and the stress of our families.
Ya que si tenemos más apoyo económico, tenemos más recursos donde nuestros niños pequeños son atendidos de una manera digna.
Because we'll be able to provide more economic support and more resources, knowing that our kids are getting dignified care.
Accesible, con horarios estables y de calidad, y podemos tener trabajadores enfocados en todas sus labores.
We'll be able to provide accessible childcare with high quality, knowing that workers are providing the best possible care. This will provide, not only will they provide roles in their work and in their professionalism, but will be able to provide an opportunity for the economy to continue growing and have a larger impact. This will improve our quality of life, not just those of us who have children, but everyone. In my personal experience, I have two children. One is fourteen years old and one is two years old. And I suffered a great deal of stress when I wasn't able to find a high-quality childcare placement for my baby. This was really frustrating. Not only did my mental health suffer, but the quality of care that my child received was inadequate, given that I had to bring her in to work with me. So I want you all to know and I want to ask of your support. I want you to invest funds into our children. So that our economy can continue growing. So that we may all have economic and emotional stability and prosperity. Thank you.
The next person to sign up to speak is online, Dina Areli Sanchez De Castro.
Disculpar el, voy a interpretarle, okay? Good evening, members of the council, and thank you all so much to the city for this opportunity to talk about the problem that we face. As a resident of the city of Durango, I know that we need to discuss the importance of having high-quality childcare. And I want to talk about four important points that we can, that I'd like to point out four important points about childcare and the advantages that we can have through this. Point number one is that improved childcare would improve our economy. It would allow us access to better jobs and give our children the opportunity for improved well-being. Number two, we would strengthen our children's development and improve the quality of their, the time spent with them. It would improve their, it would improve our children's early learning outcomes as well. And point number three related to child development, I think it's equally important to recognize that an improved childcare system would generate employment for women, which would put Durango as a leader in creating these, these systems. It would also bring forth a new generation of folks who could work to replace those of us who are aging out. And my fourth and final point, I believe that this would strengthen our social fabric, ensuring that families have a better quality of life and better childcare overall. Thank you.
I think that's it, Mayor Protam. I just need to put the translators back into their channel.
He's moving the translator back into the current channel. No one else has signed up to speak at this point.
So we just wait for the translator again? Or we done? All right, so other new business. Seeing none? We're adjourned.
The record is seven forty-five.